City Council meeting June 19, 2025 is now called to order. HK, would you lead us in prayer, please?
I will. Father, we thank you again for the privilege of coming to this place and deciding and acting on the business of people of our community. We thank you for this opportunity and whether it be decisions for the city of Jamestown or decisions for the affecting world peace, we just pray for your wisdom and guidance in all that we do. Thank you for your many blessings and thank you for letting us live in this little town. Appreciate it so much. Jesus name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands on one nation, a motherland, indivisible, with which we testify.
So everyone may attempt to look over the minutes from the last meeting, so if everyone's given those minutes, I need a motion to approve those, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, I mean, all in favor? Any opposed? We've just got a few things on our agenda tonight, but first thing we want to start out with is we have a couple of guests here that we would like to recognize that Mr. John and Cheryl Adams is here with us and I don't know if you all know how much they've done for Jamestown, but they have really done a lot. They've got a lot going on. They're still doing things for Jamestown they have. And you may have been over here. We have our works. We have the creek down here and I noticed this week on Facebook pictures of all kinds of kids down there where they had the camps going on and just something for the kids to do all the time. They have the silks up here and if you haven't seen that building, you need to go see it. It's something that you don't think you're ever seeing in Jamestown. It's just really state of the art and they have numerous things. I don't know what going on going on, but they're, they maybe got to be building a building down in the creek for some classes and different things that you all may want to talk about some of the things that you've got going on or if there's anything that I've missed that you've got going on in Jamestown.
We're trying to build a building with some space for other activities, but with some classrooms in it. The intent was to be able to bring some of the elementary schools down to the building and have some art for them because I know they haven't had art in the schools. I know they have how my itinerary, teacher class could go around. We have other things too that we can do. That was the number one reason for putting up that particular building was to be able to do that. The Jamestown kids can walk right down the, you know, right down, there's a path actually that they can walk down to get to classes there when we get it going. John's foundation has been sponsoring lots of field trips for the elementary school kids who have been, who have gotten to see shows this year. It was just what we wanted to do, be able to expose them to more art and professional productions. So I think every, every elementary school has-
Had field trips.
Had field trips. And then also just sponsored, you probably know this, the book fairs where every, every student got, in the elementary schools got $20 apiece to spend at the book fairs and they had to buy books. They couldn't buy the folders and all the chopsticks that go on there, but they had to buy books with it and that's been really successful.
I think, I think the thing that's right next door to you is what has impressed me most. Cheryl started it with Debbie Russell was the Smart Start, the pre-K school next door.
Yes.
That seems to have really kind of taken hold and enrollments increased a lot. I think it's up to 30 kids this year.
Wow.
And you know, in the beginning, it was sort of kids that Cheryl and Debbie and Reese knew.
Five kids.
And now it's up to 30.
And we started up to there at Guthrie's.
And I just, I think we both feel like this, the world's getting so complicated. Kids need every chance they can to figure out what they want to do when they get older and figure out they can do things. And so this building that's going to be down at the creek will, will allow Smart Start to grow up to 90 kids if, if it, if it wants to grow that big. Yeah. So everything we've done is we've tried to emphasize the kids and learning and exposure to different things.
Such a good thing for kids.
Well, I think I was such a troublemaker in middle school and high school that I probably learned most of what I learned in elementary school. But anyway, I think that what they started there is kind of really encouraged both of us to keep investing.
Well, we're-
And we really appreciate the community's just support and help whenever they can. It's been really good. Lots of different people volunteered for camp this summer. It's really been good.
You know, you have some scholarships because we participate. Because there's not always kids that have the ability to do some of those things.
And we give scholarships throughout the year or two for arts classes for Smart Start, actually. We give some scholarships because we know there are kids out there that can't afford, they can't afford to go like dance out for that, but there's a scholarship forum on the website.
How do you, I'm not on board of the council, how do you reach out to families to let them know what you do?
Most of it is social media and then the rest of it is word of mouth. I've asked people who have like moved here and then brought their kids to Smart Start and I ask them, how, you know, how did you end up here? And most of the time they'll tell you that somebody at church or their neighbor would tell them, well, if you want to go to someplace really good.
Exactly.
Yeah, go to Smart Start.
So word of mouth among families.
And that's been quite complimentary, really, that people want to. We, we have a waiting list for Smart Start kids, you know, to, we've had a lot of kids. We've had, we're on the third kid, you know, of the, of the family and we have waiting list every year.
I've had two grandchildren to come.
Oh, who's?
Hank and Cash Coffee.
Oh, we're getting another one this year.
Yeah, yeah, another one coming right behind.
Get those law.
It's both, right?
Both, yeah, yeah, both coming right behind. And, uh, but I, they've loved it and y'all have been a blessing to have you in Jamestown, but you, you blessed a lot of children in the county, you know, and my grandkids have loved it.
He'll send you up to Miami in no time.
Get a pretty good start on it, yeah. Pretty good start on it if we get them all in there. But no, it's, it's, it's just, it's just a great thing you do.
Well, they've met, the kids are great. And last week at nature camp at the creek, they had so much fun, like Regina was saying on those pictures, because the creek didn't look like the creek when we bought that property and John had all the ponds, you know, and we set it all back, so it's really a-
Real creek.
And we're sure some of these kids have probably never seen the creek or been in a creek and they've been there in the morning. We had other things to do and the first thing they all say is, when's creek time?
Yeah.
They want to be in the creek. So we love that, that they like the creek. John loved it, that they liked the creek so much.
Yeah, some of the pictures, you can tell when they were in that creek was when they were having a good time. But it's just so good to have somebody take that interest into these kids and especially we're just glad that it's, you decided to do it in Jamestown. You know, we need that and we just, we are so proud that you have done what we do, so.
Well, John, John's parents bought our farm in, oh no, in 1962. So we've been coming down here for a long time and he has, of course. And we always said if we came back here to live, we wanted to do something for kids. So that's always been, well, we're glad to come back. Thank you.
Took me a while. Actually, if it wasn't for Cheryl, I probably would never have made it. So when we, when we moved the last load with the U-Haul and I had to go back to Pennsylvania, she said, dear, I'm staying here.
I stayed here. He was so worried.
I was still working in Pennsylvania.
I know it means a lot and we're just glad that the kids are given these opportunities because we all know there's not a lot of opportunities for kids anymore and anything that you can do that, you know, that-
Well, they need every bit of, they need every bit of help they can get. The world's getting a little too complicated.
And the really cool thing is we have kids who started like in our first camp and now are councilors.
Oh, really?
They aged out, so now they are day councilors at the-
So how many years have you been doing this?
My camp, this is the-
Eight.
Eight years of camp.
Oh, wow.
That was the first thing we did after we, you know, got the building ready. That was the first thing we did, just camp. But we've got, and then we have one girl who started back there and she's one of the teachers at Smart Start, so that's really cool.
That's cool. That's cool. Well, we just have a little plaque for you.
Thank you.
If you weren't here to come up, this just says, meaningful appreciation to John and Cheryl Adams. There are no words to express our deep care, thanks for your service, compassion and leadership toward the development of our community from the city of Jamestown.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much. And if we can make a note for the new councilor?
Be cool there.
I was afraid I heard his feet.
Me, me. Ladies, John Adams, be back here, John.
They're not a little ugly.
Oh, yeah.
That's why she's, well, she didn't believe.
No, and she's been there for three years too, I think, yeah.
She said she wanted to just come back there and go to you.
We've heard, it looks like a lot of-
We've heard that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing that we have on our agenda is the second reading of ordinance 2025-004, the amended budget. This is the second reading.
So ordinance adopting the city of Jamestown, Kentucky amended budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025 by estimating revenue and resources and appropriate funds for operations city government, whereas the amended budget proposal message has been prepared and delivered to the city council and whereas the city council refutes such budget proposal, made necessary modifications. Now therefore be ordained by the city of Jamestown, Kentucky that amended budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and in June 30, 2025, hereby amended and adopted as follows. General fund amended to 329,522. That was the balance board. Total resources, 1906727. Appropriating out, 1642775. Leaving estimated fund balance, 630, 2025, 303952. Utility fund. Resource, total resources was amended to 5416429. Estimating all funds back out for zero fund balance since June 30, 2025. Road aid money estimated, balance board is 630, 2024, 52420. Total resources, 96165. Estimating all funds back out for zero fund balance, 630, 2025. Cemetery fund, balance board, 630, 2024, amended to 46531. Total resources, 56556. Total appropriations, 5,000. Leaving estimated fund balance, 630, 2025, 51556. Alcohol money, balance board is 123260. Total resources, 165303. Estimating all funds back out for zero fund balance, 630, 2025.
Okay, this is the second reading, so we had this last meeting, so I just need a motion on the amended budget for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tony, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, the second thing we have is the second reading of ordinance 2025-005 and this is the new budget for '25 and '26.
So ordinance adopting city of Jamestown, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026 by estimating revenues, resources and appropriate funds for the operations city government, whereas the annual budget proposal message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, whereas the city council refutes such budget proposal made necessary modifications, now therefore be ordained by the city of Jamestown, Kentucky, the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and in June 30, 2026, is hereby adopted as follows. Balance board is the general funds of 630, 2025, 303952. Total resources, 1821702. Appropriating out, 1512550. Leaving estimated fund balance since June 30, 2026, 309152. Balance board, utility fund, zero. Total resources, 5548000. Estimating all funds back out for zero fund balance since June 30, 2026. Road aid, balance board, 80,000. Total resources, 123075. Estimating all funds back out for zero fund balance since June 30, 2026. Cemetery, balance board, 630, 2025, 51556. Total resources, 61581. Department appropriations, 18,000. Estimating fund balance, 630, 2026, 43581. Alcohol, balance board, June 30, 25, 69. Total resources, 15143. Estimating all funds back out for zero fund balance since June 30, 2026.
Just also is the second reading, maybe had reinformation last month also on this, so I just need a motion for approval on the new budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mary.
Second.
Second, I begin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we got those budgets. There's a couple of things that is not actually on our agenda, but I've handed out to you all a copy of some bids on the water tank at Stevens Pipe and Steel area. And this is something that's been going on for a little bit. We've had an inspector that goes around and inspects these water tanks and they suggest or show that when those tanks need painted or they need repairs, they give you a little bit of time. So we've had an inspector that looked at it in the past and gave us a little bit of time. It's up to the point now where we have to get that water tank painted and then it's like a blower that they put inside the tank that moves the water from the bottom up to the top that keeps the circulation. But this is not just something that whether we want to do it or not, when an inspector comes up and says, it's got to be done and those tanks have to be painted back up today. So we got some different bids. This is always runs through the engineer's office and they have sent those to us and the one that is recommended from the engineers, I think, as far as the bid amount is 187,000 from M.W. Cole. We have, if you notice, there's three more bids that follows there, but they are 295, 270, 352,300, 234,900. So this is, to me, you know, the 187 is-
Go around.
It's recommended. He's done this work for different times, numerous times and, you know, it's definitely that the engineer has said it is a good, lawful person to do the work and so that's my recommendation, that we'll get the 187,000. But we do need to probably go ahead and try to get something approved to get this done because it's actual pastime that we need to get something on it.
I've got a question. I remember back several years ago, Russell Springs got like a, I think the National Guard Armory or Kentucky National Guard, and then a sponsorship to get their logo painted on one of their towers of their two buildings. Can we do anything like that, maybe?
We could if we got some money that went right out, you know, I think they were going to change it to Jamestown. Just put Jamestown and it did say Stevens Pipe and Steel in the past, but it wasn't for many kind of, I don't think, you know, that was just because that's the area that it was in.
That's what's known as the Stevens thing?
Yeah, it was just known as the Stevens Pipe and Steel water tank because that's the area it was in and that's what's said on the water tank. But I believe now their plan is just to put Jamestown, cause it, regardless of the location, it's a Jamestown water tank.
Right.
So, but yeah, there's, you know, we can, that's something that you can always do. You could try to get someone that's interested in putting their name on it.
Stevens wouldn't be arrested, him?
We could ask, but you know, regardless of what we put on it, you know, we still have to make a decision on who we're going to let to, to do the work and then we can always, that's something we could do, you know, is to try to get someone that may be interested in put their name on it. Knowing in the past, there being that we have anybody that's, you know, that's paid to have their name on the tank, but don't say that we can't, you know.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just thought that would be, I know Russell Springs, the National Guard, Kentucky National Guard paid at least part of the cost of paint to have their logo for them. And I thought maybe we could get Stevens to do that too.
And it's always a question that we can ask, you know, and see, because it'll, once we go ahead and get this underway, it'll, I'm sure it'll take a little bit before they get it all done and to the point of putting the name on it, because they do put the mixer piece inside and they paint inside and out, correct, or just outside?
I know there'll be the outside and the mixer, I'm not sure what they marked on the inside. Maybe they marked the paint on the inside too, but I'm not sure.
What was the price, what'd you say? 187,000. You interested?
Put turns the center on there?
I'm proud of it. I will work with you.
I mean, I, maybe, not, not that much.
Yeah, that's fine, but we'll, we'll be glad to work with you.
I think you have a contact for the National Guard for that though.
Excuse me?
I have a contact number for the National Guard for that. Typically, they want you to get your request in by October 1st. I do a lot of stuff at the schools and they sponsor all kinds of stuff at the schools just to put their logo on it, so I can share a number with you if you want it.
I think that'd be a great idea and then all of course they'd say, yeah.
Interesting, we can, we can, we'll be glad to hit it, you know, with the name. And like I say, it's just in the past, they just done, they kind of put the names on the locations where they worked, but now it's more just where, they're going to Jamestown. It's a Jamestown water. So, but I think we do need to try to go ahead and do something on this and let them know so they can get underway with going on, get this done because it's, inspectors brought it to our attention that we've got to, got to move on with it. So if anybody has any suggestion of any other bid or if you want to look at any other thing, but if not, maybe we could, I think try to go ahead with a motion to get it passed for Mr. Cole to accept the bid on that.
Yeah, let him go ahead and get, get the project going.
Okay, I need a motion if you all are good with accepting the bid for M.W. Cole on the water tank and then of course we can work on while this is in process of seeing if somebody that is interested in him and if they do whatever, whatever they come up with, we do that much that the city does not have to pay.
I'll make a motion that we go with M.W. Cole on then.
Got a motion by Tony?
Second.
Second by Gail. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll be set with the project taken care of. I don't know, I think everybody's aware that the city did receive a grant. Debbie and I went to Frankford and took the KIA meetings. It was, you know, we had this project, the land survey that has to be done by your cities and it's a big expense that's put on cities because we have close to 4,000 water services and those have to all, first of all, we had to send out material questionnaire for people to send back in to find out if they had any land service still out there. We sent those out two times and then after the ones that we didn't get back any response on, the city had to go out, dig down and check the line to find out what company it was. But with that, that many services, we were either going to have to dig it by hand or they were going to have to tear people's yards up quite a bit to be able to do that. So we ended up having to buy a piece of equipment that was 60 some thousand. Right. Seventy, it's close to 70,000 to do that. And then we had numerous hours of labor, of people going out, because you had to go out to every one of those. So we did go and, well, the city got all the information together and sent into KIA, which we did, were able to obtain from them 182,255, I believe. And that was to pay us back for the money that we spent on that project. Then, you know, it's just we, our thoughts toward them was it's a lot to put on a small city. It's required, it's required by the state. We didn't have an option whether to do it or not. It was required and it has to be done. And that's not the end of it. At this point, if you find there is some land that there's process, it has to go on from that point on. So, you know, a lot of expense put on there and we just asked for help for, to try to meet those, to get that done and that's what they got and it's forgiven. Nothing has to be paid back on and it's 100% forgiven. So we did get that to, to help on that project. So.
Did you and Debbie make it to Frankford or?
We did. We did. We made a few little stops and Barry, you are to keep your office. Nobody asked you for your opinion on this one.
They cooked a long way, right?
No, I had stopped. Another thing I'm sure people have heard a little bit about this new law that's coming out on ATVs. This is something that is- This is something that is, it's, it's gonna be an option. And what it is, the ATVs, I think in Adair County, they just passed. It has to be approved by ordinance. The ATVs can be licensed, they can be insured, and your sheriff's department can inspect these now and they can get them licensed, just like a vehicle on the road. There is rules and regulations behind them. I think it kinda goes by the same as when you go get a vehicle inspected is the way that ATVs are being handled. So what happens, they can go, they can get it, they can get it licensed, they get insured on it. But at this point, anybody in Russell County or any county that hasn't passed an ordinance or anything to make it legal for them to be rode here, then they're telling them at the sheriff's office and the police office, "We'll license them for you. You can pay your twenty-five dollars, we'll inspect them, but you can't ride them here. You have to take them somewhere else to ride them because it's not been passed in anywhere near in Russell County." Now, I think at your next physical court meeting, the county will probably address that. And I'm sure that they will have an ordinance to vote on whether that gets approved or not to ride ATVs on the road in the county. But with that said, it also falls under a city ordinance also. I mean, a city has to pass. And I'm assuming if it's passed in the county and the city passes it, then you can ride them anywhere. If county passes it and the city doesn't, then I'm assuming that they can't be roved in the city, but they can be roved the county. And it's all kind of still a new law that's come out. But it is something that we've got to be prepared, think about what, what your thoughts are on it. Jeff, I don't know, you do have any kind of information or anything that you want to share on that?
Yeah, it's a senate bill that goes into effect here pretty soon. It passed without the governor's signature, so he didn't, he did not sign off on it. It kind of leaves it up to the cities and the counties to decide what they're gonna do if they wanna make them legal. So I think there's misinformation about the law that's coming into effect, the senate bill. They're not gonna be legal unless the county or the city passes that ordinance to say that they can be operated on your streets. And I think there's maybe a clause in there about the federal highways. I don't know, they can't be operated on a federal highway. But you have to meet a lot of standards, much like the golf cart. You know, the KRS dictates what has to be met. But, you know, we, we are fifth in the nation for deaths on those right now. Kentucky ranks fifth right now. And that's before they are potentially.
You mean on the side by sides, though?
Yes, sir. Fifth in the nation.
And I believe, as I've heard, I went to a 9-1-1 meeting this week that had, a lot of that was brought out, that was talked about. But I believe like right now, farmers and stuffers and people that use them for farm use and stuff like that, that can continue on like it is. They're allowed to be used riding from farm to farm or something. But I think what's coming up is, do you want it to be robed, to be able to be ridden out here on your highways and on your roads? So that's gonna be something, it's gonna happen pretty soon, I think. And like I say, you need to be aware and start thinking about your thoughts, what you plan to do on that because there will be an ordinance that will have to decide.
Well, I'll take the fact that twenty-seven is this month.
It, it is, but until the state law does, but until it's passed by your ordinance for counties or cities, then, you know, that's, that's gonna determine whether it happens in your cities and counties or not. Like I say, Adair County just passed it, passed it this week, I believe. And I don't know, that's all I know about it. I'm just kinda getting the information as it comes up. And it's, like I say, a new law, so we'll just find it out. But it is something we're gonna have to act on briefly. So just be for the next, maybe even by the next meeting, we probably need to have some kind of ordinance prepared, whether to pass it or whether not to.
Jeff, that kinda put you on the spot there, but what's your opinion?
A fifth in the nation right now not being, not being allowed on the highways. I mean, that's a good ranking for baseball, but that's not, or I'm sorry, basketball. That's not a good ranking for deaths, to me. If the rules are followed, great. But knowing what we went through with the golf cart ordinances, we passed that as a city. And our ordinance, mere like KRS said, I think the only thing that we had above the ordinance or the KRS was the windshield popper. And one of the biggest things were licensed drivers. And I don't know how many golf carts we come across with young kids, eight, nine-year-old driving those. State law dictates licensed driver. We accepted that and now we've abolished our golf cart, you know. So if the rules are followed, great. It's a great thing. I mean, it's gonna produce revenue for, I guess, the state for the license, but I don't know, the, the very thing to me is that we're fifth right now, you know, in deaths. I can only imagine if they hit the streets, I'm guessing that will go up. And I'm not a side-by-side guy. The only time I ever ride one is at our lake fest and we have the ordinance where we can use them for that. You know, where the police can use them for the crowd, the city can use them for mowing and weed control and all that stuff. We passed that ordinance two years ago. I don't like riding the ones we got, but we do it because we can get in there. But I'm not a side-by-side guy. And we don't have a park here for people to ride. I mean, I get a lot of those towns out east of Kentucky have the Wildcat and the, whatever the parks are that they go ride and they're one of those people that come into town and buy the gas. But we don't have one of those parks here. We don't have one in the rec center.
What does the statute say? Does the statute that the state passes it pretty much restrictions like they're only allowed on roads of a certain speed limit or is it like?
Says, it says right here, restricted to roads other than interstate for major highways and trips cannot exceed twenty miles on any highway.
Twenty miles, I hope that's.
Local governments, they will authorize SPVs on public highways with central line payments.
They can with central line payments.
Ten dollar fee insured, equipped, cornered, upper. It says cities and counties can impose additional rules of violation such as helmets and stuff like that.
It may be a thing too where like if the county says no, like if the county doesn't pass it, then if you all did, then they could only ride it on city roads?
Yes.
Not county ride, vice versa, I guess, so.
It is.
Well, my concern is, you know, getting out on highways with fixed valve oil and speed limits and I'm sure those things probably run there or close to, isn't it? Think of the enforcement nightmare if Adair County passes it and we don't. How much border line do we have of nothing but back roads? You know, that's gonna be an issue, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I was thinking if the state was going to pass it, just pass it.
Right.
It's all, we're surrounded by several states that have, that have made them legal. I mean, West Virginia, they ranked third by the way, right now, of deaths.
Did there seem for exactly they passed it?
No, no, I don't know. I don't know that answer. Tennessee, if you go to Gatlinburg on vacation, you see those things running up and down the street and they're tagged and they run, you can rent them. I think another state that's close by is, we come across those folks that come here from other states and they think they're legal there, they're legal here. And, you know, we had a conversation with a fellow from Ohio. He says, "I can ride it anywhere in Ohio except in interstate." Well, we're Kentucky now, so, you know, it's things are different. But, yeah, it's, it's, I was thinking the state would pass it, but it kinda seems up to me they've passed the bug a little and left it to the local people, you know, the county and the city get released to pass. They gave you the prime, or, you know, the framers of it and then it's up to you folks or the physical court to pass it, so.
If, if they pass it countywide, with, with the city limits, do we have to pass an ordinance stating that we, we don't allow it?
Yes, if we don't want it in the city.
So do, do we still have to, do we still have to do one to say we, they can ride in the city limits? If they pass it countywide, it's just one that says they can't do it at this point?
You have to have an ordinance, the way I understand it, either way. If you pass it or if you decide not to pass it. The way I understood, just the talk at the 9-1-1 meeting the other day was that, did you get that, Jeff, that the ordinance had to be passed one way or the other?
That's the way they presented it at the physical court meeting.
The way I understood, yeah.
Yeah, they exposed on it then and said the cities would have to either way.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think there's some, this, I don't know if it's misunderstanding or miss, everyone is hearing, they're gonna leave on twenty-seventh. The state is, it said, here's the areas, the city governments or the local governments, county has to, has to approve it. So, because I've been asked different places and, you know, about it, like, it's not, I think we get it. The city has to pass it, the county has to pass it, so.
So anyway, that's something everybody needs to be thinking about because it is something we're gonna have to address one way or the other. So be prepared within probably the next month to decide what you want to do on that issue. And, you know, there may be more things come out. I don't know if there's any more, I'll get as much information as I can about it, but right now, that's all I know. And that's pretty much still what that's the way it's gonna be. It's, you know, it's got, like I say, they're inspected just like a vehicle is. I think the only thing, Jeff, didn't they say it doesn't require residential water or something? That was the only thing that's normally on a inspection day or something that, that you didn't have that. But everything else is pretty much by vehicle, so. Anyway, I think Miss Shelley also is here tonight and we've kinda talked different times and we've been back and forth about the property that the city bought that Shelley's interested in buying. And a lot of the concerns was the survey on it as to where the property lays and what part of the property is it sitting on and who's somebody else in. And we did have that survey.
Okay.
Have you seen the survey?
No, not that, not the one.
Okay. So what, we, we got a survey just to kinda show where the property does lay. Really weird, of course, there's the one lot that we bought from June in Virginia. We know that has a deed, that has a legal description, so we know exactly what that is. But I think the question was where they used the parking lot there, kind of by Real Java. City owns a little piece of it. Somebody, I forgot who it was, Paul Johnson owns a little piece of it. And Real Java owns a little piece of it. So it's a very weird cut-up piece of property there. So that's kinda, so, and to, back to you, I guess, as far, are you just interested in the lot that we got that has a legal description? Are you wanting to try to get our part of the other lot? And, and I, we're, we're asking for what you want.
Excuse me, Jeff, to answer your question. I've also spoke with Rodney about purchasing his lot as well. So that other small piece, I think we just finished that out. And then the lot behind that Real Java, I think they used that for parking and dumpster and stuff. But the easement behind there, I could also use that as parking for myself if that easement was opened up behind us, that runs along back there. So that was my plan. But the one next door to me, I'm most concerned about is just, it's starting to grow up. It looks bad and I would like to clean it up. So I think that's probably most important to me.
The lot that we have a legal description on that's next to your real?
Yeah, the one's small and I'm not, I'm not really worried about that. And it's pretty much in the road. I don't know that there's anything other than parking that could be done there.
It's a very odd the way that, and, and that was the whole thing. We were, we really, we could go look at the, what they had listed, but it made no sense because they had little sections here and trying to figure out who owned what. So that's why we had the survey done and that's pretty much what it looks like. It's just a very odd piece of property there. So, but your interest at this point mainly is in the lot that we bought that is next to your real?
Yes.
Okay, so that, and it's kinda, things like I told you, it's kinda went back and forth as to what the city's intends were, what they wanted to do. Is it that they wanna try to keep it, have more parking additionally down the road? Or are they ready to sell it? And, and then, of course, I talked to you before, there were stipulations because there's only certain ways that cities can sell these properties. And, you know, part of that is it has to be turned into a business within so much time. And we talked about those restrictions. I guess why, at this point, we need to open the questions from the council or what, and make some kind of decision on what would they want to do about selling that piece of property.
Well, I'm just curious about your plans for the property, if we were to sell it to you and what kind of time or you were looking at for that to happen?
Sure, I'm going to put another little one there.
What kind of, what kind of time for every bid?
Well, that depends. I guess, I would like to say within a year or two. I think, I think the regulation was two years, something like that.
Two or three.
Two or three.
I believe it was three.
It was three.
Yeah. I think it was.
Three is what we discussed.
So within that timeframe.
Yeah, within three years, there was to be.
But I'm pleased enough immediately, it's just, it looks really bad. It's brown, so that would happen immediately until I got my drawings and stuff done. So that's gonna take some time, but.
Would it be a new business or an addition to your expansion of your existing business?
It would be a new business.
Anybody else have any questions about the property or any questions for Shelley? Or Shelley, you had any questions about?
I don't think so.
Hey.
I'm sorry, you did, you did talk to Rodney about purchases, Nils, too?
I did.
Okay, good. Hope that works out also.
Yeah, yeah, he, he is wanting to see growth in the city. So he was actually excited. First, he didn't want to sell. He thought he would hope that something would happen in Jamestown. And then he, he said, when I told him my plan, he was excited about that. And so that's what he hoped all along, somebody would come back instead of tearing stuff down. And so that was my plan.
And I think in prior discussion when this came up, we quoted a price that we sold it to you. And then I think it was the three-year restriction on or had to be a business within three years. And that's just things that would be, I guess, pretty much contract if the city decides to sell it, so.
Sure.
And it would have to be, if that wasn't done, it would have to be sold back to the city for the same price that we sold it before.
I think that was the regulations when we talked about it. Like I say, there's only certain ways cities can sell properties and, and that's kind of all we're about.
Well, I think it's great that you, that somebody's looking at the build there with everything basically gone from that area. Especially if the prospects are good, that you can get that from, from, I'm just gonna give you more. Room to work with.
Shelley, I guess one concern I have is if you own the, the lot on the other side of your building and you've had that for some time and you have never done anything there. I mean, that, that's one of my concerns on, let me just say.
Sure, so that was my original plan. And I don't know, everybody's aware what happened there. But that building caved in a week before I closed on it. And then it was to get a roof, it was a year and it was when, it started to get contractors and it just kept getting along and it's, then there was termites in there, so I just gutted and I'm gonna start fresh. And that's a much bigger project than what I'm wanting to do next door. But fast forward, I had the opportunity to purchase the building that I'm in now. And I knew that I could get that done faster than what I was gonna do next door because I want to build that two-story on that one. And then when this property on the other side, again, that is gonna be a smaller project than what I wanna do there. But since I got that cleaned up. but since I got that cleaned up and it looks somewhat presentable, um, so I'm just kinda trying to work on what looks the worst and get it cleaned up because it just, I feel like it's nice or, um, beside the head. It's, it seemed like there's a lot of obstacles and walls falling and it's always something, but I'm trying to, um, at least make it look better and, um, do something nicer.
Pretty much nothing in the, the building she redid, it's, it turned out very nice.
Thank you, thank you. It's very nice seeing you.
It is, it is.
When you walk in, it's like, uh, yeah, so.
Yeah. Happened to them.
Okay, so I think we need to make a, some kind of decision or because she's waited for quite a while, decided, and we waited a long time on the survey and to try to even make that.
I'd make a motion to sell it first.
We have a motion made by Barry to sell under the conditions that we talked about.
What's, what's, like those conditions?
Uh, okay, I think the purchase price was ten thousand and it was a three-year to put a business in the lot, if not that, um, this can be sold back to the city at the price that you paid for it. And the other thing was, was that all? It's been a while since we talked, Shelley, was that all?
Um, I think it was, um, it was kind of be some sort of economic development.
That was reasonable. That's how the city can sell it is for economic development, yeah. That's why we had to say there's gotta be a business put there and that we have to have some kind of time on it.
Yeah.
Second.
But I, I believe that was the conditions that we, um, had talked about.
Well, I agree with, with William's second, so. You made, you seconded, make your motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Barry to sell this property under these conditions to Michelle and I have a second by William. I'll need all in favor.
Uh, but we do need that in contract form.
We will, we have the contract.
Do we have a new survey too?
We did a new, we did a new.
Yes. Well, now, the, not the property she's buying.
Okay, got it.
We have a legal description with the property we're selling her, it's the same thing that we bought in June.
Gotcha, alright, alright.
Good.
Any opposed? Tyler, would you call him, please?
Mr. Mark?
Yeah.
Tony, you're up?
Yes.
Very copy?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
Yes.
William, right?
Yes.
Motion passed. The only other thing I have going on is, um, some decisions that we need to talk about for Lake Fest. And this has kinda been, we've worked on this different times as to whether to let a alcohol truck sit up in the city for Lake Fest. And it's down to if we're gonna do that, we have, um, some people that are wanting to sit up, um, lifted spirits, doing mixed drinks. Lifted spirits.
Felt like a Baptist church, huh?
And there, so, uh, and, well, we, I guess the situation is if, if you, if we want to do this, to allow this to be set up, it's just gotta be in a contained area. Tyler's gonna check, but we feel like at this point, the contained area can be the area that the square is marked off, so it can be just like one of your vendors set up somewhere. What you would have to do is you would have to, we don't have to, but the way we're looking at if we do this is, uh, you've gotta have control over this. So the city would set up a booth to sell bracelets to people who would want to buy alcohol. Uh, let's say that we sell bracelets for five dollars and the bracelet goes on the person that's able to buy. Then they go to the truck to buy alcohol and then they will cart in, check their ID and all that before they're still allowed to buy. So then the money itself from the bracelets and stuff would come to the city. And I mean, I said five dollars, you can set that whatever you want to, but I'm just saying that's for instance, you know, if we, that, that's kinda the rule we have to follow. And the reason for that is when your bracelet's on, everybody knows that you have permission at that point to have alcohol on the square of Jamestown. Now, can you buy it anywhere else? As you can. Has it ever been set up right there in town at Lake Fest? No, it hasn't, but you know, it's been something we've talked about numerous times and now we've got people wanting to set up and, um, and we just, we need to address it and decide if that's what we want to do, so, um.
Do we get a curve of saves?
Well, that, that's something that you can, you know, we talked about that with Danielle. Of course, they do a lot of setups in Crystal at the tourism department, so I, I feel like there's different ways. A lot of places do it, you get a percent, just like on some of the events that we have set up like this. Some of the rides, the kids' games and stuff, some of them you get percent. Then you have vendors that sell food and then they, they pay a, same amount.
Yeah, they play like a flat rate a hundred dollars or also it's five dollars, the, the spaces are twelve by twelve, so it's five dollars for each additional foot, so that makes that a twenty-foot trailer.
Right.
The game people really want so hard that I've ever done that.
So you, it's the city's option and whoever you're affiliated, you know, as to how you want to charge and to allow that. You know, if you charge them so much of their sales and then the city gets to sell the bracelets also, whatever, you know, that, everyone that you sell that goes to the city, um.
That'll be a regulatory fee, I mean, that, that license will cover them up so much on regulatory fee that comes back to us on that five percent of it, so.
My personal opinion for the first year would be just charge them, you charge a food booth with just a hundred dollars. If they do well and then wanna come back, then you can change it to a percentage, you know, because we want them to do well too because you want them to come back essentially or maybe, um, and you can change it the next year, but that's, you know, that's just my opinion. Just a sensitive first type of thing.
That's kinda how we do with the food trucks. You know, you want people to come, you want them to make money, so you want them to come back. If they come and they don't make any money, they're not gonna come back, of course, I mean, that's just, you know, that's just life. If you don't make any money, you're not gonna go back and do it, right Shelley?
That's right.
So, um, but, and the reason that we need to make some decisions on this is Lake Fest is, what, two weeks away? And, you know, we just need to get the, and, and what that consists of to us, and we've kinda done this for the events up here at the, uh.
What was the? Drag strip?
But not the.
The drag strip?
Well, we, we worked on one of the drag strip, they didn't go there, but Detail Shop.
Detail Shop, thank you, yeah, you know, they had, when they had the bike nights and they had, and they've set up a trailer there and we have to say that, you know, that we're okay with it as far as the city and we have to sign off that it's okay for them to sell alcohol at night. Now, their thing is, um, has to be kept there on the premises, you know, where they're at. And there'd be a few little things there that we'd have to find out, Tyler would, about can we just, does it have to be a garden area or can we use the provisions of how the square is marked off? So few little things, that's why we need to make a decision on it because we're this close to Lake Fest and you can't do it overnight. There's nothing that could be done overnight, so, um, that's where we're at. We just need to, uh, we need to let them know, they have inquired about wanting to set up, so. We need to let them know if that's, uh, something that we want to bring to Lake Fest.
I guess that's something else, we've had people in the past that have talked about it, we just, we've just never done it. Is this something that you have to put out for bid on who, who gets to come up here and do it or, or we just pick it or, I'm not sure anymore.
Yeah.
Do you have any bids for your?
Cause I know the, I know the lifted spirits is, they actually do this one. At, uh, the Detail Shop, they actually do that event. Um, I think they were actually gonna do the drag strip event too, um, but, I mean, do we just let, are we gonna cap it? Or we are, limit who comes in here if there's, if there's ten people that were coming here and stealing?
The way we do it is first come, first served, I mean, it's out, it's publicized, any vendors that want to can reach out, here's the number, here's whatever, and if they don't reach out, you know, it's just kinda like food trucks, you, you have to help, you have to work for so many anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how we, that's how we regulate it, is here's our open dates, if you're interested, we have, you know, we're not gonna actually barbecue trucks, so if you come and pay us the fee or whatever it is, first done it's yours.
And then just keeping in mind, you just said that you all are allowing all these people power, are you all charging for the power? Like they need to use our water, that's twenty-five extra dollars. You need to use our electric, there's twenty-five extra dollars, so those are things to think about. If I bring a food truck and I have my own generator and I'm, you know, water powered, I don't know, I don't pay anything extra. All these people coming in, that you're having to put them in certain places, like if this, you know, alcohol truck comes, like tell them. Okay, you can come, but you gotta be self-sufficient to where you're not putting any extra money into it, you're gonna be losing ultimately.
Right. And, you know, normally we don't, we've had as far as in the past, we haven't really looked at the city making any money off. We are, we do, just like we have shirts, we make it now for Lake Fest and we sell those, but we sell those just enough to cover what we have in them. You know, we want to advertise like this, we're not trying to make a big profit on it, we just wanna advertise like this and, you know, so. And so for you all too, you will have shirts if you all wanna, we probably have them next week.
Do you have one to your thoughts on?
This is awesome. Uh, we strive to have a safe event here every year, um, with the crowds that are here. I mean, I'm not naive to know that there's not drinking that goes on with the crowd that is here, but we, if you draw, if you, if you draw attention to yourself and we give you attention, the last several years, we had no arrests, none whatsoever. And I can remember my days when I very first started here, the record was thirteen arrests that I had in one night and alcohol was a big common denominator, a lot of those arrests. Now, last year, we did have two alcohol related arrests and those people drew attention to themselves when they walked through the crowd. We don't go up and check the cups, I mean, we don't have the manpower to do that. I mean, at the most, we have seven officers to police that entire crowd for the night. Um, and it seems like we, at one time, it was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, now we're down to Friday and Saturday in those events, that's, that stresses our department for, you know, I mean, we're working numerous hours all the time, but, um, I mean, I have, I don't have my opinion on it, but.
Is alcohol gonna be regular beer or would be reduced, you know, you got like freezing beer that sometimes they serve events, it's all be, it would be regular?
It will, but I think they had an options of bottle or can, and my thoughts, it would have to be cans because you don't want bottles out here.
Well, it had to be a cup, would it not be a cup?
No, they, this, this specific truck does, uh, mixed drinks and can or bottle, see if you choose. If you didn't want them to do a bottle, they would just do a can, and then there's another truck that's letting you know tomorrow for sure, yes or no, after you all make the decision, if they're even available. Um, and they would do tap, beer on tap, so it would be a cup. There's two, there's two separate ones, one does both if the other one couldn't, but it's just an option, just two different options.
And then we could enforce that too, I mean, we even, we can say we're not doing cans. They, they sell can, they sell whatever they want to, but we want, we want.
We'll save cups.
Yeah, that way there's no, there's no visible alcohol.
Right.
Yeah, that's the thing.
They could pour the sale in a cup, yeah, you could, if you want to, go in a cup, yeah.
Uh, I guess, like, like if somebody sells it, like in the restaurants, take for instance, Real Java, if they sell it, can they walk outside?
No.
They can put a lid on it, they can.
I think they can, still.
Real Java?
I think any, any place that sells, that sells alcohol since COVID, if you have a lid on it, they can live with it.
They like it to go, like it to go margaritas.
Yeah, it can be wrapped up.
Yeah.
Right.
It's gotta, it's gotta be a set lid, yeah, you could walk out there with a drink, yeah.
You can walk out of any restaurant that sells alcohol with a lid on it, margarita, whatever you order.
Yeah, I mean, that's, but, you know, when you, the minute you take it off, it's immediate.
Yeah.
AI or whatever, you know, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what it's called, but illegal is what it's called.
They can't go in Real Java and buy, can't stand on the sidewalk and drink it. It's not legal, yes.
No, they can, as long as they have a lid on it. As long as it has a lid on it.
Yeah, can't drink it, is what he's saying.
It's the same to go cup as a Pepsi or Mountain Dew though, so unless you walk up and check it, are you really gonna know? They're still gonna be able to walk out with it regardless.
They can walk out with it if you.
Shouldn't have strung it.
No, what I mean.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the only way you can walk out there is a sit lid.
Yes.
They, they can hand you a straw.
So you're saying they can walk outside and open it and stand on the sidewalk and drink?
If, I mean, yeah, if they were, if you, like he's saying, that would be illegal.
Yeah.
With going in a rest, going in a sit-down restaurant and like, if you left with it with a lid, it's fine, but if you open it outside, it's not.
That's what, that's what I was getting at, is.
You can't, you should not call a public place without.
Right.
Regulation, meaning that, like this, they were talking about.
Right, you can't just go in there and buy one and come out with a lid on it and say, sidewalk, drink it.
That's law.
So here's the thing, we have two weeks to Lake Fest, so we have to make a decision. Because it's two weeks and we have, it's got, you gotta have time to get this set up. And we, and Tyler needs to get the regulations and we, we need to order the little bracelets to sell or whatever, you know, so we just, we need to, uh, to make a decision as to whether you want a truck.
Will it be all out, would it be just at nighttime on a particular night or how is that?
It'd be set up, just like the other group said, it'd be set up twelve to nine or three to nine, whatever, whatever time the other trucks were setting.
Yeah, I think the link to that event is the way that issue lost.
I don't know, but I don't believe I can do it, if I come walking tomorrow, I might quit though. After a full day on Friday, I might quit on Saturday. I don't know about that, so, um. I mean, I think if you ask, um, everybody in Jamestown, do you want, have people say they want to do and have people would say they don't want to do. So it gets down to.
People will be drinking anyway, whether you sell it to them or whether they have it in trunk of car or backseat or whatever.
I agree, when people go to the event and they're gonna drink, they're gonna have it with them, if they're gonna drink, one way or another, you know, but.
Um, the only way that I would be for doing it is that it would be in cups only, no bottles, no cans, you know, um, it would have to be a cup only thing for me, if they can't sell tap or they don't sell tap, then you don't get to. And I'm not sure I'd be for that. But it's like William said, those that are gonna do it are gonna do it whether we do, let it be sold or not. But they're gonna have it in cups, you know, they're obviously not gonna walk with them in cans or bottles.
Well, you can make that decision, can you, whether it has to be put in cups or not.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that can be a thing, that it has to be in a cup. They, I mean, I, I don't know, we do festivals, but you can walk around and see somebody drinking a beer, uh, but can or bottle, I mean, I don't know, there may be some, but I would hope that things like that were restricted over there, especially when you've got kids and stuff, you know, it don't need to be visible. I'm like you, I, I think you're gonna have it regardless, you will. And then I'm like you too, that, you know, that if, if, if we're gonna. And then I'm like you too, that, you know, that if it, if we're going to do it, it needs to be in cans and it has to be. I mean, I'm sorry, in cups, it's no different, then nobody knows the difference if you're drinking a Mountain Dew or a Pepsi or if you're drinking alcohol, so. Tough decision that it's one we've got to make.
Let's get on with it. I think we need sell. I'll make a motion to sell.
William, we've got a motion by William to allow the sale with cups only.
Yes.
Uh, during Lake Fest, as long as we can get everything set up, that we know that it is correct and we're legal with what, the way that it's set up. Is that your motion?
It is.
Okay, so I've got a motion by William to sell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Still we're called Tyler.
Mitch Haller?
Yeah.
Tony, you're up?
Yes.
Barry, copy?
No.
Gil, rush?
No.
Yes.
William, rush?
Sorry.
Three to two, motion carries. So we will allow as far as, as long as everything's set up and is legal and correct. So if you can.
Are we going to put a number on the, the number of licenses that we're going to issue to do this? I mean, if five people come in and they want to do this now that we've said we're going to do it? Are we going to, if all five of them do it, are we going to say, well, or are we going to do one or two or?
Well, we have, we will have, no, we can only, a couple of. Yeah, we've got limited space right now of what we've got, that we can have another trailer like that set up. So, but I guess going forward in the future, that's something you need to think about, like.
And where are we going to locate them in the future too?
Well, and if you want more trucks, you know, we could have them, make sure they have, you know, their own generators and stuff. We could do five if you want, but I don't know that we need that many. What do you all think? I mean, you think we do?
No, I don't know. I, but that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we're going to do this, I think we ought to put some number of.
Do you want?
Some limit, limited to some number.
And you're going to have some, they're going to have to be, the way we're going to draw it up right now, they're going to have to be on inside the water, and so we'll never be able to branch them out. The way this is going to be looked at right now, crosswalk, crosswalk, worst case scenario, we have to rope off a beer garden area. I'm hoping, when I talk to Maggie, that we're, we, we can say what we've got closed in and bring barricades up and just put no alcohol on this one at each crosswalk, and hopefully that will work, I'll, I'll buy that. But worst case scenario with beer garden, without being said, either way, these are going to have to be smashed inside the square somewhere to get this done. And if it's a beer garden, we're going to have to have an area for them, so you're probably looking at, you know, two, two would probably be unmaxed because it's going to eat up so much of their area just to take these in.
Like where do we have the barrier or where the actual crosswalks are? You know, you know.
No, I think, I think the actual, we're going to have to raise barriers, yeah, to, to the crosswalks and do it. Yeah, to limit it, and that way you can at least limit some, some enclosed area.
I would be just putting them over by the bank and Geovant like that, because that's where the stage, you know, the music's over there. And that's probably where people are going to congregate with us. I would probably walk straight across the bank.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, in that area somewhere.
So, so, so you're talking like where you over at?
You're talking.
You, you're, you're going to ask for movement in that area?
Well, you know what the food truck lines look like? With all the, with all the vendors we had at the end. So imagine what it's going to look like with.
Well, you probably need at least two then, because.
Malt beverages?
Malt beverage, yes.
I would, I would say two. I would say two would be my thoughts on it.
I'd say, yeah, that's a problem. They have to take my leave. And we can just control that by, I mean, you know, we can allow two to come in if there's a problem space we got.
Yes, thank you very much. We've got the best council people.
And then you'll be free sets of $5 for sure.
Uh, what do you all think on the cost? You think?
I mean, you, you don't have to, I mean, that's just, that was just an idea for.
Thank you very much.
You all will make it, but that's not sure you have to. Well, they, they buy my hat, bracelets, you know, they've got my hat though, so I think.
Does their employees have to check, I mean, obviously, have to check ID to sell.
I said liability wise, I wouldn't put that on, I wouldn't want to do that. Like if it were me in my office, I wouldn't want to be the one that's checking IDs because that's not my, that's who we're selling alcohol.
Right, but what I'm looking at here is if we sell a, a bracelet to somebody that's not old enough.
Well, I mean, I think we would check it, we would check it to make sure.
Thank you, we do.
Well, we have a contractor that's working here, we have a work to see. And if the truck is stealing, we check it.
We will check ID to sell a bracelet and then the truck has to sell, check it to sell it. This is the way I think it would have to be. Because we want to make sure that they're selling it to, what is it, to somebody that's in age. And then the truck make sure that they're serving somebody that's of age. And the way that you recognize that these people can have it earned is they've got a bracelet.
We'd better put a bracelet on them like they do at the hospital, if they're going to slip off, because.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, it would have to be one of those at this time, so. I mean, you know, you've just got to take whatever, I mean, you have to make sure that it's. All the way, I think that you can do that. Because we make sure that we just check their ID to buy a bracelet, and if the truck has to ID them to sell it. Okay, any more thoughts on Lake Fest, of course?
Well, there's a really important question, hadn't been asked, who's going to sing the national anthem? Oh, really?
Thought it was you.
I was going to practice.
That was a dumb, dumb question, wasn't it?
Lake Fest tradition.
Yeah.
Isn't that a given? I mean, that's.
They'll roll me out when I start using a wheelchair.
Well, if she ride. Me and my grandson was going to get it.
Get you a bar, if that'll win you.
We were in the 5K and I said, well, I'll have to walk it most of the way. And they all said, man, you better think about doing that, you've got to give out the medals and you won't even be able to stand. I said, thank you, I used to be a crap person. I can walk it, I might not climb it, I can walk it.
New day, new day.
Okay, anybody have anything else that they want to talk about or anything that we need to discuss? Anybody with counsel? If I want to go home, I guess.
No, you're doing it, go ahead, say.
I have a motion, got a second by Barry, all in favor, any opposed? All right, thank you all. Thank you Ellen, we'll get, uh, uh, it drawn up and like I said, we got an illegal script.